Seven oh seven, you can please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, welcome to the October thirteenth business meeting of the Milford Department of Education. Can we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Yes.
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Ferbender. Nicole Flowers.
Here.
Tracy Erby. Ms. Erby asked to be excused. Tom Kova.
Here.
Christina Preet.
Here.
Adam Scobie.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Cindy Woboyhan.
Here.
And Susan Glennon.
Here.
All right, we have eight members present. Thank you. Student reports. I believe Marcus, you're all on tonight?
Yeah.
I believe Jonathan Law's first, so have the podium. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be with you once again. To start off, the girls soccer and volleyball teams both hosted raffles for WISH's games. Through this, the local elementary school winner was given the opportunity to become a member of the team for a game. All proceeds were collected and went to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. This past Tuesday, grades ten and eleven through the PSATs, grade nine participated in freshman activities and grade twelve had a college and career exploration day. Underclassmen Picture Day was last week and parent guardian conferences are happening this week. Some great news, Jonathan Law ranked thirty-fifth among high schools in Connecticut by the NICHE rankings. Also exciting news, our student body is looking forward to our homecoming dance this Friday, October seventeenth. In the English department, the morning briefing is in full swing, running smoothly and helping the law community stay connected each morning. Additionally, September was another record-breaking month for the advocate. Views on the online advocate this past month were over eight point six K, their highest single-month total ever, beating the old record by almost a thousand. Teachers have been using DLT time to share about student work and share ideas for lessons and activities. These conversations are helping the English department continually improve their practice. In the core English classes, students are busy reading and writing, preparing for end-of-unit assessments as the quarter, end of the quarter approaches. The math department has been exploring new ways to incorporate more SAT-like problems into the curriculum. Today was, today also marked the start of the weekly peer tutoring from the National Math Honor Society. In the world language department, teachers are emphasizing opportunities for students to produce language, especially through speaking activities that allow them to use what they've learned in meaningful ways. Students are engaging in conversations, interviews, and many presentations entirely in the target language. In the special education department, the postgraduate program is in full swing. The PGTA program allows the students to take part in real-world experiences in the community, learning to practice important skills and explore different jobs. These experiences help our students connect school to the real world and see themselves as an important contributor in their community. The TLC has checked out over three hundred books. Freshmen work on independent reading choices and juniors in AP Lang chose a nonfiction book to analyze. The help desk is up and running with A students working on Chromebook repairs and Chromebook swaps. The TLC had its annual library card drive on Friday. The drive focuses each year on making sure all freshmen get a library card and opening up to all other students as well. This year, around a hundred and forty library cards were issued. The fall season at Jonathan Law is off to a great start. Four of our programs still in contention for postseason play. We are also proud to announce that Jonathan Law has been awarded the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Michael's Achievement Cup Award. This prestigious honor is presented to the schools that go above and beyond in fostering a positive athletic environment, emphasizing not only success in competition, but also character, leadership, and overall student athlete experience. Law sent six student representatives to the CIAC Sportsmanship Conference to participate in group discussions and receive this award. College visits to Law began September fifth and will continue through November. Overall, representatives from seventy colleges and universities will connect with junior and senior students during the fall semester. The school council has hosted a field trip to the NEACAC College Fair at the University of New Haven on October ninth. It chaperoned thirty juniors and seniors on this trip to meet with representatives from over one hundred institutions. Thank you all for your time and we look forward to seeing you all next month.
Thank you, Marcus. From FormEF Shay and Joey.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be with you all here tonight, although I do wish the weather was a little bit nicer. But we wanted to start off by talking to our TV studio class. They've been working hard this past week and have started airing their daily broadcasts, which feature an iCarly-themed intro and various segments around foreign high school. The mainstream era also just printed its first magazine of the year, and to celebrate, students had bagels which were courtesy of divines. Students in history classes throughout the building created nine-eleven good deed pledges. They were displayed in the lunchroom and serve a great purpose that remind us to both be faithful and kind every single day. Hispanic Heritage Month also started on September fifteenth, and students in Spanish classes started learning about old Mexico, reading things such as the beautiful, reading about things such as the beautiful talvera tiles and pottery that comes from the city of Puebla. Students in AP Psychology were learning about phonology, which is an old scientific practice that said the determination of human traits could be done by studying bumps or indentions on the human skull. Students did a hand-on lesson where they observed each other's skulls and said what traits they saw. Students in US History studied Western expansion and learned how to interpret art as though they were social scientists. They looked at six different paintings and had to arrive at conclusions about the themes of each one. Our foreign child learning center received their first lesson created by the high school students. It focused on both social and emotional development, and it was a great experience for both the pre-K and the high school students. Sophomore students in English two finished reading of Mice and Men. They got to watch the novel on the TV screen and now will be writing an essay on some of the themes they saw throughout the story. Our natural helpers were involved with our open house that took place on September twenty-fifth, where they both guided and aided parents in specific locations around the school. Our spirit week occurred from September twenty-second to September twenty-sixth, where students took part in themed days like Country Day and Adam Sandler Day. And to end the week off, there was a pep rally where students from each grade got involved in friendly competition and participated in activities like musical chairs and relay race. If anyone's curious, the seniors obviously won. Also this week, multiple colleges visited Foreign High School, including the University of Southern Maine, UConn, the University of Delaware, and many more.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the hospitality tonight. Let's get rolling. Homecoming was held on September twenty-seventh, where students gathered for a night of fun, music, food, and lots of dancing. Everyone had a great time. This week, Foreign will be hosting the Save a Life Tour, where the students will simulate scenarios of distracted and impaired driving. Simulation will teach students a valuable lesson about how dangerous this type of driving is. Tomorrow and next week, students will be visiting Harborside and East Shore Middle School to represent Foreign High School in welcoming the incoming eighth graders for next year. They will be able to answer questions from a unique student perspective as well as give advice. Many clubs had successful first meetings, including Psy Lions, GSA, Multicultural Club, The Giving Table, and more. On October seventh, it was PSAT Day for our Underclassmen and College Exploration Day for our seniors. They were able to get to work and got work done on their Common Application, as well as take tours of any schools they may have wanted to see. Parent-teacher conferences are taking place this Wednesday and Thursday on the fifteenth and sixteenth, where our natural helpers will once again be assisting in making sure everyone gets to their designated rooms. Many Foreign students have been attending programs at the Milford Public Library that are free and extremely helpful regarding things like financial aid, the FAFSA, and more. A sophomore student of ours published a book called Reckless Hate on September twenty-second. Her name is Victoria Bailey Citron, and Victoria's book is currently available for purchase on all major retail sites, including Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, and Walmart. Unified Sports had their first practice where they played soccer and are preparing for their upcoming soccer tournament at Shelton High on November sixth. The Foreign Girls Swim and Dive Team is participating in their yearly fundraiser called the Lapathon, which fundraises for breast cancer research through the Smilow Cancer Hospital. This will be on October eighteenth, and the girls' record currently stands at four and three. There is three weeks left in the regular season for Foreign Girls Volleyball, and they hold an outstanding record of eleven and one. They are number two in their conference and number three in Class M. Esports had an amazing week last week. All of the teams put in a lot of effort, and the Rocket League and Mario Kart team ended up winning their matches. Our Foreign Football Team had a bye week for the week of October fifth, and then this Friday, they will play an away game against Brookfield. Best of luck to them. We want to thank you all for listening us tonight. Everybody have a great night. Thank you for the hospitality.
Thank you. And feel free to head out, students, to attend to whatever you need to attend to for the rest of the evening. All right, we have public comment next. Are there, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public comment tonight? Seeing none, I will dispense with the public comment statement. Board members, we are going to skip item five and then we'll move on to the chair's report. We do have a lengthy agenda tonight. I just want to remind board members that after tonight's meeting, we have two more regular meetings up for this term, October twenty-seventh and November tenth. Veterans Day Parade is on Sunday, the ninth, stepping off at two PM. Everyone is invited. I forwarded to all the email on the invitation earlier. And there's also a re-flaying ceremony on the eleventh, which is actually Veterans Day, at ten forty-five at City Hall. And I want to thank everybody on the board for your diligence over the summer and into earlier this month as we considered a consultant to help us develop a facilities master plan for the district. We, it took a lot of extra meetings and a lot of time and a lot of homework and research, and we appreciate, I appreciate your diligence and the collaborative work that we did. For the public's info, we have selected the Stanford firm of Perkins Eastman to continue the work with us, which will include board updates at the appropriate times and additional opportunities for public input later in the process in, you know, after the new year, maybe late winter twenty twenty-six. I think that's it for me. Do we have any liaison reports tonight? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. The Permanent Schools Facilities Committee. We've chosen three different architects to move forward, three other projects that we are going forward with. One is for the esports, esports roofs, and then rooftop units for cooling and various other things. So, we will be working on those projects going forward, and so it seems that a lot of work will be starting in the summer to be ready for next school year. So, it'll be exciting.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Preet?
Thank you. Milford Prevention Council. Staff from Milford Prevention Council went to the Connecticut Prevention Summit in West Hartford. They did a vaping education to two seventh-grade health classes at East Shore. Harborside's happening tomorrow. The Milford Prevention Council bylaws were updated and will be voted on at tomorrow's coalition meeting. Youth Committee has grown to forty-two members, from Law, Foreign, Laurelton, East Shore, West Shore, Harborside, Eastham, and Hopkins. Freshman forums at the high school is occurring November eighteenth at Law and nineteenth at Foreign, six PM. Speakers are confirmed. The topics are going to be youth mental health and youth gambling. Milford Prevention Council attended Foreign Club Days. They provided speakers for both Law and Foreign for PSAT Day on October seventh, and they held their annual meeting on September twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Mr. Smith?
Just less a report from ACE's, more just a kernel of knowledge I'd learned at the last meeting, especially as it pertains to buildings and facilities. There's a whole bunch of projects they're doing. They're doing one Chase Academy up in Waterbury, and the architect, they're in the construction process and in the construction planning process. It's, they're planning to take, it will take twelve to fourteen months to get the electrical panel for the school building, between when they say go, and just the production timeline is just wild. So, that was sobering to hear that it takes fourteen months to get an electrical panel for a building, so, you know.
What do you try to say?
That it takes a long time to build a school. Production delays are real.
Last one hour, it was two years, so it's a good deal.
Anybody else with any liaison reports? All right, that's the end of my chair's report. Dr. Katia, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. We're happy to launch right into the superintendent's report, kicking things off with the instructional highlight, particularly on mathematics, with Mr. Autieri, Ms. Carrato, and Mr. Apicella. Over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Katia. Members of the board, good evening. We're excited tonight to continue our instructional highlight regarding K-12 math. Specifically, the two folks who are going to lead the presentation this evening, I think they have a combined four months or so in the district. Ms. Carrato, who is our pre-K five STEM supervisor, and Mr. Adam Apicella, who is our six-twelve STEM supervisor. The hope tonight is that we are able to share with you the curriculum work, assessment work, as well as the student experience around our K-five and our six-twelve math curriculum. So, we're going to highlight the three different buckets tonight. Specifically, really want to just make the connection to all of you that we continue to foster the use of strategies as a tool for students to approach math tasks. And we really believe in opportunities for students to develop agency, to basically build, to apply the strategies to their learning. And I hope some of that is apparent. I have to give a big thank you to Ms. Flomé, who has been a tremendous support, helping us capture videos of our students and pictures of the students in the classroom doing the math work. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Carrato and Mr. Apicella.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. So, we're going to walk you through what math is like for a Milford student from counting all the way up to calculus. So, to start, we are going to invite you to become mathematicians for a second. And I have a problem up on the board, on the screen. And we would like for you to just take a couple of minutes to think about how you might go about solving this problem. Think about the solution that you'll come to, and then we'll kind of have a brief discussion of it. You could use whatever you need, paper, brains, anything. It's all on you. Try to start off with a fairly easy one. This is a sixth grade, six or seven. Yeah, you could see it. So, does anybody want to share the way that they're thinking about this problem and even a solution if you have one? Yes?
I think really, I do bunny at work all the time. So, I took six, divided by four, and then said ten times that is fifteen. So, it's, you know, it was almost, but I've been an engineer for forty years, so.
That's great. And that's a great strategy, and thank you for sharing that. Did anybody come up with the same answer, but just differently, that they want to share? Yes?
I used the same strategy, but then did four notebooks is times two is twelve dollars, and then half of that is three, so fifteen.
See some doubling happening. That's great. Anybody else? So, I won't make anybody else. It's okay. I won't crush you. But one thing, I'm glad that we had two somewhat different strategies, similar and different in a way, because we wanted to show you that that is something that we really highlight when we're thinking about math, and that's across the board, no matter what grade level. When you look on the board, there are these are some different ways that students come about solving this problem. So, again, it might be, it might look different on board, but then when you think about it, it really is the same thinking that we just heard from the two board members. And one thing that is really important to understand about math is we want students to be able to think flexibly. We want students to be able to access the content in a way that is comfortable to them, that invites them into the problems, and it helps them to understand that there are so many different ways to think about how to solve problems, how to come to solutions. And so, throughout our presentation, you're going to hear a lot of that, and then when we show you the video in a little bit, you're going to actually see that and hear students' voices being able to talk strategically about how to solve problems and how to come to reasoning. So, coming to this slide, this is our goal for Milford Public Schools in mathematics, and really across the board. Again, we really want students to be able to access the content. We want to invite there to be multiple entry points into problems so that students don't get stuck right away, and they're really able to think about the numbers, and that really also helps to build their math confidence. And when it comes to agency, we want students to feel comfortable contributing their thinking, contributing what they believe is the way that they're going to come to an answer, to a solution, and talking about that in a way that makes sense to them. And that really helps to build their math identity. That really helps to build their confidence and their ability to be able to do the math and their ability to be able to think about the math. And it helps them to understand that giving a wrong answer isn't a bad thing, because that is how we learn and that's how we make improvements. We give wrong answers, we reflect on those answers, we reflect on the way that we came to those answers, and then we think about a different way to maybe approach that problem so that we can come to a correct answer. And that's how we build and we make improvements in our overall understanding of the math. That is our goal across the board, K through twelve, is to really invite access, agency, and identity for all of our students. You're welcome.
The goal for everything we do is to be tied into our vision of a learner. Ideally, this is happening without even thinking about it. So, these three elements, engagement practices, rich tasks, and outcomes, work in a cyclical manner. It's not always a perfect circle. You kind of bounce around. The outcomes in the bottom lead you to those dispositions in the bottom of scholarship, personal development, citizenship, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be, creativity, and innovation. The top left, engagement practices, that's what Stephanie was just talking about with, we're getting students to be doing math, not just sitting there and being like a passive observer. Most of our curriculum starts with an investigation or some real-world problem that you have to solve before you actually dive into some procedural, a little bit more rote things that gets them up and moving, gets them talking, and people are going to make mistakes, people are going to be wrong, which is, as we all know, the best way to be usually wearing. And then with the rich task component, the big part of that is getting students to persevere through these things and then be resilient and bounce back. You need multiple entry points. These need to be rich tasks as a given, but they need to be complicated enough, complex enough, where you need to be able to do your procedural skills, but also apply them conceptually. And everybody always wants to know, what am I ever going to use this? And the more we give them things that they're going to use, the harder it gets. So, it's actually kind of a fun, a fun balance. So, then through our HQ islands, our teachers are building tasks to get students to truly have to work and think and become agents of their own learners. We need them to, you know, not just try to do math, we want them to deep think about things. We give them a lot of other students' work, whether it be fictional students or students in the room, and say, what don't they understand about this? me through your steps, but why did that step make sense? How is that the right step? Or what is the wrong step about that? Plenty of times in throughout the video, you're gonna see our students up and about, moving at the whiteboards, and we've also started, not started, we also focus on every time that students have to crunch numbers. It's gonna happen, you know? So the video shows mostly them up and about, but a couple times you'll see them sitting down at desks and just doing math, and striking that balance is really important.
Thanks, thank you. So when you go into a Milford public school math classroom, these are the look fours that we provide our teachers. These were developed by collaborating with classroom teachers, with coaches, with principals. This is really to help us to build that coherence across all of our schools. So when you go into a classroom, you're going to see students, they're questioning each other, they're questioning their own thinking, they're developing reasoning. As Adam said, they're persevering through the problems that they're solving every single minute throughout that entire class period. They are really seeing themselves as capable, curious mathematicians within their classrooms. And in terms of the content, they are selecting tools that are appropriate for what it is that they're doing and how they're solving problems. And they're, again, thinking flexibly about the strategies that they're using, and they're selecting strategies that are appropriate for what it is. I mean, we saw a problem before, and there are going to be some strategies that just aren't going to work to solve those problems. And so talking through and having that time to collaborate with their classroom peers, it's helping them to learn from one another and to really see the different strategies that are appropriate and that work when they're thinking about that problem and how it's solved. They're constantly making their thinking visible. So again, when you see the video, you're going to see our students, they're going to be up at the whiteboards, they're going to be sitting down at tables and desks jotting things down, they're going to be in whole groups, they're gonna be having conversations that way, but their thinking is constantly visible. It's constantly out there so that they can see it, they can see their learning in action, and so that their peers can see their learning in action as well. And it really helps to spark some good conversations across the board. So next, we'll get into some of the specifics. So in our K through five math curriculum, the resources that we use, we have two of them. We use Cathy Fosno, her context for learning mathematics. We also use illustrative mathematics. So there are two different programs that we kind of merged together into one, and again, these are our resources, we use our Common Core State Standards. Cathy Fosno is really a story-based problem approach, so that really brings that real-world context. It helps to anchor the math to how we really see it out in the real world. And it really helps them to understand how we use the numbers. And then illustrative mathematics, it gives a little bit more explicit teaching, there's a little bit more of, you know, language routines and instructional routines that are tied within that, so students are kind of getting exposure in multiple ways. They're using manipulatives, math is hands-on, they're, you're going to see some number talks, that is the way that we develop fluency. And again, they're doing some problem-based tasks. So it's not the same, it's different, and it's unique in the way that they're learning and they're thinking about it. There's also a lot of collaboration, which is great. Again, they do some independent problems, and they work alone to really think about their own learning and to reflect on their own learning, but they are collaborating with one another constantly. So this is kind of the structure of a math classroom in the K through five world. We start every day with fluency. So fluency, you might think that's math facts, right? Like when we think about fluency, a lot of people think math facts. It is actually more than just that. Fluency is not only accuracy, so are we getting the correct answer or not, but it's also efficiency. So it's, like I said before, thinking about are we using strategies correctly, or what strategies can be used to come to that problem. It also gives us the ability to think flexibly. And again, that's listening to our peers around the room, giving other strategies, and really understanding there's multiple ways to being able to solve one problem. So that daily fluency, it's a part of all of our lessons. We don't skip that, it usually comes in the form of a number talk, and again, it really invites multiple entry points, so that students can have that voice and to be able to give their understanding and how they're going to go about solving those problems. Then you'll see some whole group instruction. This doesn't happen for the entire class period, and it depends on the content that is being delivered. So this happens in a variety of ways, but it does happen, students come together, usually they're sitting on the carpet in the K through five world, and the teacher is leading a whole group instruction on the content that they're gonna be learning. Then you see a lot of small group collaboration. So again, getting together with up here or a couple of classmates and really talking about the math that they're learning. And then we have that ACEA block, so that's the academic support and acceleration, sorry, thank you. Hold on. Thank you. So that is a small block at the end or at the beginning, it depends on where it's best fit, that's where we give our students support. It's what they need. Do they need some more support in the content that they learned that day? Do they need some support in some standards that maybe they need some reteaching on before they are able to access their grade level content? Or do they need some acceleration? Do they need some more of a challenge? So that's that time where the teachers can really differentiate for the students that are sitting in front of them. And one thing to keep in mind is throughout every single one of these components, there is constantly assessing being done. So teachers are walking around the room, they're observing the students in action, they're listening to their conversations, they're providing immediate feedback so students can then reflect on their learning and make changes. We have some standards checks that we're currently developing, those standards checks are basically what they say. It's a problem that aligns to a standard, and the teacher provides that to the students so that we can see where are they in terms of their understanding with those standards. And that way, if they're struggling, we can make sure that we help to reteach those skills that they need, or if they're showing us that they're mastering that content, we can adjust appropriately. So those are constantly in, going on throughout the lessons, our I A Bs are something that we're constantly doing within the classroom where it's appropriate, but that assessing component, that is constantly happening. We're constantly looking at students' work, we're thinking about how they're attacking a problem, we're listening to the conversations that we're having, and we're providing immediate feedback so that students can adjust and continue to build upon their learning.
Can you let us know, what is I A B?
I...
integer assessment block.
Thank you. So many acronyms. So that is basically a, like a condensed version of the SBA assessment. It's really used for teachers to get a gauge of how students are learning and where they're at in terms of certain standards. So it's more organized by topic, and it's not like SBA where there's all these crazy questions that are just randomly placed all over, and it gives teachers good data to be able to really see how students are performing on those standards at that moment. So we don't do them at every unit, but there are some units that they fit nicely into.
Yeah, Ms. Glennon, it usually covers about two to three standards, so it's designed to really get some focused data on a very small subset of what we would assess across the whole SBA.
Thank you.
All right, so for the secondary component, we'll start with a problem. I think mine's more fun. The suspension system of your car, your parents' car, needs to be replaced. It'll take somewhere between three and six days to fix, depending on the availability of parts. I am not currently experiencing this, this is not from personal experience. You go to your favorite rental car company, Milford Rent-A-Car, to get a rental, and they offer you two options. So you can either just pay sixty dollars a day, have the car, or a down payment of forty dollars and twenty-five cents per mile. What's a better deal?
Depends on how many days, how many miles a day you drive.
Mm-hmm. About how many do you think? What do you think, where do you think that cutoff is?
I would multiply six times sixty to get the max amount, and then determine how many miles I could drive to be able to meet that amount and divide, determine from there.
Yeah. Yeah. So the problems used to be a little more simple back in the day, you used to be able to say Verizon charges you fifty dollars a month plus ten cents per text message, but all those problems are now, though we know 'cause it's all pretty much unlimited. Even a lot of rental car companies don't totally offer this. I was scouring Enterprise, Avis, all of them, and found this example. But yeah, the answer really is depends. I think it's about fifty miles, if you travel about fifty miles a day, it's about the break-even point where less or more, you could choose your other option. But then there's things to take into consideration like, do you have to go see, I don't know, your brother in college, and so you're gonna add more miles on that day? Like there's all the different variables. So something like this, I mean, you could spend an entire class on breaking everything down, you can be graphing it, you could be shading it, you could be finding your optimization points. And the nice part about a question like this is the system of equations or inequalities. Questions like this will come up on the SAT, but they'll actually give you the equations. So we actually give our students, like they have to work harder to figure it out. My favorite part of the task like this is our teachers will then give somebody, somebody else's work, like I was mentioning earlier, and it's critique it, like what's, like where are they right and where are they wrong? And it works out pretty well, and students feel a little safer there, that way they're just writing on somebody else's versus out loud where it's that, nobody wants to be wrong, so.
It's different in elementary school. They all wanna share.
Not every high school class is like that.
I understand.
So in general, these are our themes for the six-twelve math land. Six through A is building reasoning confidence, it's almost like you're building that math muscle that you're continuing on from fifth grade. You know, it's, you're trying to build their number sense, we're trying to get them to understand that, you know, math is all around us as corners, that sounds. Nine twelve is where you're actually flexing those muscles and using them to solve real-world problems. One thing that we're working really hard on, whether it's myself, Stephanie, or my other counterpart, Sarah Brewer, in the humanities land, is trying to get students away from the, I'm not good at math, to I am good at math. I mean, if you wanna say you're good at it, I'm not gonna stop you, but that, especially in middle schools where you see that big shift of, it goes from I don't like math to I'm not good at math. So we're trying to avoid that, to avoid that self-fulfilling prophecy where students honestly are putting themselves in a lane of, I'm never gonna do good at math, math's never gonna be like me, and we know that starts young. So it's giving them these opportunities to work with their peers, see how their peers are thinking, and balance their strengths. The nice part about that last task, there's so many entry points, if somebody's struggling, I can show them a graph of the two car rental companies, and they can see where that point is. We can talk about, okay, so what if you rent the car for six days and you drive ten miles a day? Like there's different places that you can help students, to help anchor them, to help them develop their number sense. All right, so our teachers work really, really hard, and they have written honestly phenomenal curriculum, curricula. We use the resources to support those. So one of them is Delta Math, it's the second bullet, we use that six-twelve, and that is honestly, it's mostly just, it's not rote practice, but it is that more procedural it is practice. We, with some of our resources, we're seeing that our students, like there's great conceptual, real-world, deep thinking happening, but again, at the end of the day, sometimes you just have to be able to do math, add, subtract, multiply, divide, graph, whatever it may be. So Delta Math is a phenomenal resource. I was asking teachers about, like, if you had to cut something, if you had to keep something, if you had to get more, and every single one of them, six-twelve, like, nope, Delta Math, we need it, it's that practice that our students need. Good stuff. Amplify is a new-ish resource. The middle school is using Desmos Math, which is a phenomenal resource. When I came here and found out that that's what we have, I was beyond excited. It is a tool, it's, like, I was talking to some of my colleagues, this is so nerdy, I was like, I was bragging that we have Amplify, 'cause it's one of those resources that it's, I don't wanna read off the slides, but it is interactive, it's discussion-rich. Almost every task in there can be done electronically or digitally, or they also give you all the resources and tell you how, if you want to do this on pen and paper, this is what you need to do. So there's that balance, 'cause some things, when you're tracing or reflecting, you need tracing paper to do that versus online where you can just reflect it over an axis. So it exposes students to both, and it even tells you which lessons are best digitally and which are, you know what, close the Chromebook and do it on pen and paper. Plus in there, there's also so many interventions now. It used to be called Desmos, and then over the summer, they changed it to Amplify Desmos, and they moved some things around, but we're doing great. But with that shift, they added a lot more resources, and now it's just time for our teachers, they're going through, to figure out, okay, we have all these resources, when can we use them, when should we use them, how's this gonna work? General, that's our middle school math, in a nutshell. High school takes all of that and keeps going. So Mathematic is our resource that goes with our curriculum, and again, it's really discovery-based. It starts with a problem, it starts with a focus, maybe it's your car rental, maybe it's maximizing the area for your yard, and right away, it gets students thinking. So some of these, again, some of these tasks can get really complex, and students are really quick to say, I don't know. So the Mathematic has, okay, try this with students, and then if that doesn't work, okay, then try this step, you can slowly release more things to them, and then our curriculum, which has all the standards, folds it all nicely. Math is hard, okay? High school math is not an easy concept. Calculus, I mean, I loved calculus, but...
I got through it, though. I'm good.
And with our students needing four years of high school math, we wanna make sure that they have the algebra and the geometry, the algebra two, to get them ready for any SATs, anything after that, if they wanna go college algebra in college. But then we also have our electives that are great for them, that we have, I'm already jumping ahead of slide, but our Math for the Lible Arts course, that is, I mean, we've got, I wanna say four sections of it, running off the top of my head, I could be wrong, that is doing great. The textbook is like, I've never been excited to read a textbook before. I never got to take that class, though, so. But anyways, high school is continuing to work from middle school but doing more real-world stuff, which again, is fun, is interesting, but also harder. The other reality, this chart shows the historical tuition at cost per credit hour. So we know college is not cheap, especially that top line, which is private school. The top line is a private four-year school where per credit hour, you're looking at fourteen sixty-nine, one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine, but you figure each course is at minimum three credits, so one course is about, on the cheap, forty-five hundred dollars. So we're trying to help our students. We currently have five dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment courses, where students that are in their math class in high school, essentially if they pass, they get college credit for it. And we're looking to expand that. A lot of these courses are the, you know, advanced courses, or even our new Math for the Lible Arts. Literally, last week, I was at Gateway, just looking, seeing about some of their courses, trying to see maybe our Algebra II courses, are there anything that we can get some students that maybe aren't gonna end up at AP Calculus, some college credit now to help prepare them for when they get to college, that's gonna help them, they're, it's not the act placement exam. You know, what are some opportunities for students that aren't gonna go to college already with thirty credits to get them in route to that? So we're looking at other options with the community colleges, even seeing what other schools, like even Southern UConn, have to offer. We have our Mathematic for the Lible Arts courses we talked about, plus our teachers did work in working on our other fourth-year electives. Our students have a lot of choices, it's pretty fun, they might not always agree, but our students, there's a lot of breadth for them to get them ready for life after high school. I know!
Ready? Okay. 'Cause the next slide is the video is just gonna go, so we want you to be ready for it. And just remind us, that's it. You're welcome.
You guys make a great team already. Thank you.
So our desks are about six feet apart, separated by a wall that's six feet tall, that doesn't go up to the ceiling, so pretty, like anytime stuff, like in the conversation, I just shockingly chime in.
I have to throw candy over the wall.
Okay. You're not supposed to.
Okay, just you're sharing.
So honestly, we could talk all night long about the K-12 math, we get really excited about it. We figured instead of just telling you, let's show you, in a small way, it's what our math K-12 does. Our teachers aren't just telling students things, they wanna get to the showing, they want them doing. So sit back, relax, and enjoy the show. Emily's gonna work, I'll clip it.
It's September. What do you think, Emily? Could we do something here? Well, how would your mind do this? What would your first step be?
I would agree with her.
Okay, what do you wanna agree with too? You can do whatever you want.
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay. Okay, I wanna agree with that so far? Okay, everyone agree with that so far? Okay, what do you want to add first, so eight hundred and ten? Okay, so we have eight hundred and ten plus thirty. You know what that's equal? Yeah, so you wanna go like this for a minute and say thirty plus ten? What is that? Thirty plus ten more. Okay, so we're adding the eight back, so it's eight hundred and... Okay, we're on the right track so far. What second did you? Eight hundred and forty-seven. Very nice job. You did compensation and keep a number, turn like you said, put the one into the hundreds. All right, last step, we're almost there. Add them, I'm now gonna add seven and one, what is seven and one? All right, I have eight hundred and forty-seven, okay. Same answer two different ways. On the back of this paper, I want you to spend three or four minutes just getting your ideas out. What is your plan to solve this problem? Yes, there are two. Okay, I'm under going here, right? So you have four ones, four just... So that's what, that's the answer, right? Sixty-five, once you have the little... Three times four. Something, no, and then like you're multiplying. So how many two? Yes. Reflection, rotation, okay. Reflection's gonna take us down there? Anybody else? Same thing? Okay. Anything else? I can't hold it enough, you were direction. Go first, do what's, I think, right, that's here, right?
Do you remember when you were reading on tables, it was like a big no-no? It's such a, like it's a cool thing now, right? I love it, I always wrote it all down. They're cool though, okay, who wouldn't write it on a table? So one thing about, you know, seeing that video is, again, you've heard a lot of what Adam and I talked about today. We talked a lot about students sharing their strategies. If you've heard the teachers, the teachers really do a great job with not giving students answers and really asking them questions and trying to help to guide their thinking so that they are the ones who are coming up with those solutions. Not only is that going to build their confidence, but that's helping them to persevere through that problem solving, which is what we want. And the teachers do such a great job, the teachers, the coaches. It's really wonderful to sit into a classroom and listen to the conversations that the students have with one another. And then teachers are really there just to facilitate and to help guide those discussions. So there's a lot of student-led things going on in the classrooms. And one other thing is, you know, we, I'm sure you probably hear it too, I hear it a lot, that we don't teach the standard algorithm anymore. That's out the window, we don't teach that anymore. That is very false. And as you hopefully caught in the video, our teacher actually, that's in that picture right there, was showing not only how students were decomposing numbers to be able to solve a multi-digit addition problem, but they were also using the standard algorithm. So we do still teach the standard algorithm, but instead of exposing students to the standard algorithm right away, we help them to develop understanding about all of the components of the standard algorithm so that they understand the math behind it and not just memorize a procedure. So that's the goal, and that's the goal again, K through, K through twelve. So you're very much still teaching the standard algorithm.
Yeah, the big thing with that is just with trying to develop number sense. Somebody once said, "Oh, it looks like we want everybody to be math teachers." I actually wish, because I would solve a lot of problems, make hiring easier. But think about when you learned how to do long division, how, like the second number, you just like bring that number down, you put a zero in. I didn't realize why we put a zero in for a very long time. And I was like, "Oh, it's a ten split, oh, now I get it." For so long, it was always just, this is what you do. Now it's, okay, let's figure out why we're doing these things, how this works, and then also, and this is what you do. And it's been incredibly helpful.
So, you want me, okay, Adam, uh... So looking ahead, we do still, we've done a lot of great work. Our teachers, our coaches, our building principals have continued to do a lot of good work to improve what we're doing in math in Milford. But obviously, there are always, there's always room to grow. So there are still a lot of things that we're continuing to do in our work to make improvements. Obviously, as you know, Adam and I share a space that's not too far from one another, so we are constantly collaborating, constantly. We don't even have to go into the same room, we can just talk over the wall, which is great, to really strengthen the coherence and the alignment of our curriculum from K through twelve. And one thing we've been talking a lot about recently is that vocabulary and really making sure that our students understand the academic vocabulary, the math vocabulary from K through twelve, so that when they are making those transitions from grade to grade and from school to school, they're not stuck on the words because they maybe heard it something different. Obviously, we want them to know that there are a lot of different words for certain, you know, things in math, but we want to make sure that that's consistent across the board. So that is one specific example. But we are continuing to have those discussions to see what we can do to strengthen our programming from K through twelve. And our, in the K through five world, we're also going to be starting a curriculum review shortly. So we are in that timeframe where we've been implementing Cathy Fagno and I am for quite some time. So now we're going to be rolling into really digging deep into what we're doing in the classrooms, looking at some data and figuring out, is this the right direction for us? Or what do we have to do to make some improvements? So that is something that is upcoming and that we are going to begin soon.
Yeah, and then for us, it's, I mean, it's building on all those things. Making sure students have insured experiences, just because you live on one part of town doesn't mean you have a different math life or education than the other side of town. And then especially when you have three middle school students at two high schools, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's coming on the same page, whether it be pacing, whether it be topics, whether it be opportunities. As our law rep talked about earlier, that our math teachers at both schools are looking to implement some SAT questions into their day-to-day. So for example, that rental car question, the SAT College Board has a bank of questions similar to that. So teachers are having that be their warm-up for the day instead of writing one of their own. That way students just can get used to the way College Board writes these questions. It's a few minutes, it's nothing intensive, it's not belaboring the point, it's just getting them that practice. We talked about, last month, about having the middle school summit and our superintendent answered questions about that. We are in the middle of planning that right now and working with the principals to figure out what's going on in middle schools. We have great instruction, we have great curriculum, but how can we make it better? How can our students honestly perform the way we know that they can? And again, like it's just taking all the resources we have and making it, make it happen.
We continue to help our staff just develop more of an understanding of different strategies and different approaches by, you know, providing professional learning opportunities, especially through our HPI model. So that is constantly ongoing. We're constantly looking at more ways to develop, how can we assess students? What are we looking for? What are those outcomes? I mentioned before that we started to implement some standards checks at the K through five level, so that's something that we're continuing to develop. And we're having conversations about what are we looking for when we're looking at those standards checks? What data, what evidence do we want to collect? And how do we plan to use that evidence? And how are those conversations going to look in the teacher meetings? So that we can make sure that our students are getting what they need and that nobody's falling behind. So that's also ongoing.
You had two really important things. And one of them is, when we do assess our students and we get that data, what are we doing with it? You know, we're not just assessing them to say that we assess them. We're not just getting to get a grade or a score for report cards or anything like that. It's actually using that to then drive instruction, thing one. And thing two is finding that sweet spot. We don't want to over-assess our students. We don't want to do practice SBA or SATs every week, every month even, that, for what? Think about the time you're losing for instruction to do that. That being said, we also do want to assess them. One, to give them that experience and help them build their stamina, but also to see what do they know and what do we need to tweak, change, and adjust. So we're looking at trying to find that perfect sweet spot.
And also encouraging our students to do the same. It's hard, because when you're in middle school and high school, the bulletals don't have grades, but you get a test back and the only thing that a lot of them do care about is, what was my grade? What did I get on it, right? But we really want to shift that mindset with all of our students that that's not the purpose of school. It's not to look at what grades you get, it's, let's look at the thinking and what led you to that grade. And let's think about how you can maybe build on that and grow in your understanding based on the feedback that you received. So something that we're really working hard to do across the board.
Good. Thank you. Do you have questions from board members? Mr. Scobie?
I have a long speech and then one question at the end. I just, first thing I want to say is, I'm really excited about how excited you two are, because you guys are like leading this from the top down, right? And when you have leadership at the top, like also excited about these things, it like trickles down and makes an impact. So I appreciate that with you guys. The other thing I really like about this is it's making it more interactive. You know, the newer style of teaching is all about where the teachers are more like coaches or mentors, where they provide information and then like, now you go do it. And then we're here to help. And so like, that's what this is doing, so I think that's great. And I also think making it more interactive just tends to make class more fun in general. I don't know if anyone will ever admit that math is fun, but at least it's heading, I know you will, I can tell you. It's heading in that direction, right? So it's like, I think it's great. You know, you made that comment about how people say, "I'm not good at math. I don't like math transition, not too, I'm not good at math," right? And having these more interactive things, I think, will help prevent that, because they'll get their pieces little by little. One other thing, the long speech was all compliments, just to leave. In the video, one thing I think that was great is, in those group settings, it was really hard to discern any type of audio. And the reason for that was because everyone was just engaged in talking. So I don't know how often you see that in a math class, so I think that's great too. And then finally, for my question, on one of the slides, we were talking about ASA blocks and you're talking about kind of assessing students and seeing where they're at, which is great. It's always good to kind of identify where students have areas that they can improve upon and then you can kind of target those. And I'm sure you're doing that, and I'm sure we can all guess how you're doing that. My question is, when you find students that are excelling, you said that you'll make adjustments, but I'm curious like what those adjustments look like so that that student can continue with excelling and, you know, maybe move ahead at a little bit faster pace. But you obviously can't, you can't just sit down and lecture that one student because you have to move forward. So I'm just kind of curious how you target that.
So one thing that we are also working on right now is to develop learning progressions. And that's really to look at the standards that you're covering, your grade level standards, and to understand where are the students coming from and then where are they going to. So if we have students that are constantly showing that they're really making strong improvements and their understanding is there, we can look at those learning progressions and use them as a tool to be able to say, okay, let's see if you can, let's see if you can go to this next level. So it could be something like that, or it could be something like taking, you know, what it is that they're learning and having them, giving them just a little bit more of a challenge to it. So maybe asking them to dive a little bit deeper into the problem, or maybe asking them to think about other strategies, other ways to, you know, approach that problem, because that's what's gonna help to build their number sense so that when they do get to other problems that are a little bit more trickier and challenging, they have this bank of strategies that they're able to kind of choose from. It's hard in the classroom, the teachers, again, they do a great job with balancing it, because when you walk into an ASA block, you have the teacher that's working with either one student or a small group of students. And again, that is dependent upon what the needs are of the students that are in front of them at the moment. And then the students that are not with the teacher, there's a lot of different great activities going on. So they could be working again together on, you know, a more challenging problem. They could be playing a math game of some sort. They could be doing some independent work. So that time is structured very differently, dependent upon the data that the teacher is getting and what they see and what the students need in that moment. But it's really a great opportunity for students to be able to get that, what they need in that moment and for teachers to be able to address those skills so that students are ready for whatever it is that they're moving on to.
And then also at the middle school too, that's where our diversity specialist is coming to play. A lot of that's when I pull students for chunks of time. One thing we work on, the teachers understand though, is just because somebody is excelling in this one area, more work isn't more rigorous work. So in different units, it's gonna look differently, what extension might be. It might be, going back to the car rental, now you go find a couple different rates and you compare, you design a task. It might be sometimes having that student help be a teaching assistant for that lesson, but just because you're, let's go with math, just because you're good at math doesn't mean you're great at teaching math. And sometimes teachers be like, "Oh, you got this, go help them." And maybe you are not the person to be helping. So it... Part of it is just... They really helped a lot.
I know, it's great.
Part of it is, our teachers are doing a lot of work this year on belonging, getting to know their students and having student-centered decision-making. So on top of everything else they're doing, that's on top, that's getting to know their students. One, who are they outside of school, but also who are they as a learner? And they're collecting data on that. Especially at the middle school level, in their data teams and in their grade level teams, they're analyzing that. And it's helping them to figure out, what do our kids need and how do we do it? It's pretty...
And you addressed, something that you had said that made me think of during the elementary ASA blocks, we also do have some special ed teachers that might go into those classrooms during that time to help support. We also have coaches that go in during that time. So it's really nice because in many instances, you go in and it's not just the classroom teacher. There are a couple of adults that are actually in there. So our STEM teachers will go in there sometimes if they're not teaching during those blocks. So there's a lot of teachers that are in there and it's all hands-on deck to support the students. So it's a really great opportunity to help them, right?
Mr. Scobie, you had a question?
Yeah, I echo Mr. Scobie's comments. I really enjoyed the presentation. You guys did a great job and your enthusiasm, incredible. I also like the way, the methodologies and the problem solving, where you're making students realize life, math is part of life, you know, it's everywhere. I just had one question, just to, if you could reiterate for me what the intent or what the purpose of the Delta Math tool is? I didn't really pick up on it the first time.
So that's more so, honestly, just practice, if you will. It's less conceptual, it's less, what car rental is gonna be the better option? It's gonna be, here's an equation, go graph this line. It's going to be factor this quadratic. In middle school...
Mechanics of math.
Yes, it's more about just extra practice. But it can also, you can find tasks based off level and how good students are doing. So it's not like you're just like opening up a workbook and you have more worksheets, it's actually things that those students need. Thanks.
Other questions, Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. I'm not gonna repeat all their comments, because I... It's been interesting to hear the reading. We've spent a lot of time in the last few years talking about reading and so to have math and to have you new come in and have a fresh eyes is always, I think, beneficial. You just mentioned before in your response to Mr. Scobie about middle school and kind of pushing it in more of the intervention model. Was there discussions more about moving towards more of this acceleration model that we've, seems to have been approached more in the elementary school with our coaches?
I, so that's, I think, the point of the learning progression tool. So it's really, you know, we want to meet kids where they're at. So we want all of our students to have access to grade level content, but we understand that there are gonna be students that are not ready for that grade level content. So we expose them to that grade level content, but then we use things like the ASA block or just differentiating instruction in the classroom to be able to, you know, address those needs that students are ready to learn. So for example, one thing I could think of is, today for, we were doing a pre-assessment for a grade three classroom that's about to jump into multiplication, which is a big thing. You should have saw how excited they were to multiply, it's wonderful. Super excited. But the part, the point of the pre-test, it assesses their understanding of those standards that they need to master in order to access that grade level content. So being able to kind of see that data and use that data to be able to then think about, how am I gonna restructure my classroom so that I'm giving my students what they need, so they're not falling behind on that grade level content, but instead, I'm helping to support them in their learning and developing those skills that they really need in order to access that grade level content. So it is something that we are working on. It's, it's a lot, but it is, and it, and it's a shift, right? Because you think about intervention and you think about, you know, going back and addressing those multiplication facts. And that's not all it is. That might be a part of it. But we really need to make sure that our students are understanding those, those grade level skills from the previous years in order to be able to access their grade level content without building more gaps. So it is something that we're working on as a team. The coaches are really working hard to develop those. Again, those standards checks will help us to kind of get real-time data so that we can make those adjustments and make sure that we are meeting their needs and helping to address those standards so that they can access that grade level content. So we are heading.
With accelerated work, too. Most classes, like the accelerated courses as well, like the seventh, eighth accelerated. So a lot of the outcomes gets done there or within the class when teachers are, you know, juggling all the things and challenging their students.
Ms. Doyle, I'm going to answer that more directly also. So part of the, one of the outcomes of the middle school summit that we're planning, I think I referenced it last time we spoke, is to revisit the intervention model of the middle school. And ask ourselves, and look at the data, actually. What they haven't told you that they're also huge data geeks and very good at it, actually. So they are disaggregating student data from the SBA in lots of different ways that we can take a look and actually look at some of the students who have been in intervention and ask ourselves, to what degree was that successful? So we are taking the lessons learned in the elementary on, from the student-focused coaching model and asking ourselves, what can we apply? Because middle school's a different structure, schedule, et cetera. And intervention does lend itself more to a deficit model, which we've talked to ad nauseam about. And this lens of acceleration does then start to become what Mr. Epicella starts talking about is, how do you accelerate kids through math courses, right? That's what starts to become synonymous with that. So right now, it's a, let's take a look at the data so that we can make an informed decision and not just jump into that. Okay? So more to come on that.
Appreciate that. Last comment, I appreciated hearing too about the college-level classes for the students who are not going to do calculus, who are not going to continue in the math degree. I mean, sometimes just having a basic algebra is really so, so important and to be able to get those credits and not have to worry about that.
Not have to take algebra two over going to college for no credit.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Other questions?
Ms. Preet? It's more of a comment. When that video was playing, I literally saw myself in sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And, you know, it was the rows of desks, four by five. And you're looking at one teacher with one chalkboard and you're following along and then something doesn't click. That was my mom, so I say, it will click, it will click. Or my dad would say, it will click, it will click. So you're going along and you're kind of following along. And then all of a sudden, it's like, I'm stuck. And I think what's, what's, what's good is I'm seeing is that you're so trying to avoid the, I'm stuck. And if they are stuck, you get them out with either student collaboration or teacher collaboration or something so that, because as we know, everything builds on everything in math. So if you're stuck for three days, you're going to probably continue to be stuck. So that was, you know, I got a little nervous. It brought back memories, right? So it's good to see that there's more involvement in ensuring that students can build, keep building and know that they're not going to miss something or go back to, you know, all right, what do we need to do to make sure we fix this? Because we have to move on, right? So they, it's very impressive, thank you.
It illustrates very clearly that we don't teach math the way we used to, right? And, and for good reason, I think. I wanted to ask about resources. I heard a comment recently that they don't have textbooks anymore. How are kids supposed to, you know, figure things out if they're home and they get stuck? So are there textbooks?
So for.
Older courses, probably, right?
Yep, so for, we'll start with six, eight. The textbook is that amplifier where they can log in, that's where they can access things.
So it's a digital textbook?
Yes. And same thing for high school, it's mostly mathematic. The AP courses have their books, too. That's a whole beast. But yes, it's, it's not necessarily, it's not, we've come a long way from just first off the book. And then for a while, it was just a PDF version of the book that you can get to online. Now it's like essentially it's hyper-linked, if you will. Through usually Google Classroom, that's where you can go see the examples. You can go see extra problems. Also, a lot of our teachers also upload their notes as well, which was never really an option back in my day. So there's, honestly, there's more resources out there.
Okay. How about elementary school?
So there are no textbooks there either. The teachers have access to the resources digitally. A lot of what they do is hands-on. What you see here, you know, on vertical spaces, they do have some things that they print out if they need to jot things down. They have some math journals, so they definitely are still writing. We're encouraging that and jotting down their thinking. But as far as actually handing them a workbook of some sort, we don't.
So if a child gets stuck at home doing homework, what are their options?
There should be some resources that are sent home. If not, we will, that is, that is one thing we will make sure that we look on the website. Because I think that it's important for, for parents to have an understanding of what resources students can access. Obviously, as Adam said, there are so many different things that are out there digitally. I do know that some of the illustrative math components are digital and families can access those. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how, if that's something that is messaged out to parents or not.
Yeah, I think we're continuing, especially as we look at the new report card in ways that we can connect parents with the, not only the literacy skills we're learning, but also overviews to each unit that help parents think about resources that will connect them to the students' learning. So there's tools to help them for homework and things like that.
I mean, clearly, the way methods have changed over the years and it's certainly more engaging for kids. And I, for me, this is what helps kids love coming to school. Because they're, so I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we want the textbook pieces to be ancillary. We want them to augment and support the curriculum, not be the driving component.
Right. Ms. Wolfboy.
Just kind of random question based on how things have changed. Does summer math packets still exist?
Not in the online journal, I don't know.
I don't know.
Working for us in the summer, why don't you know that?
I, I don't believe so, to be honest. Again, may, maybe like AP Calc or AP Statistics, just some pre-work. But for the most part, as far as I know, no.
So Ms. Wolfboy, and we do provide, we have a website that connects to summer learning. A lot of it's like the Governor's Math Challenge. We try to keep it real-world, so it's not just packets of things that are posted online. But it's ways that students can connect with their families during travel. It's continuing with that context of real-world and application-based. So we do provide some literacy and math resources through our teaching and learning website.
But it's not like on the first day of school, you have to turn in your math packet that you spent, or your parents spent.
Are you having PTSD right now?
And I think that all summer working on, not the night before.
Very good. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to great things in math.
Us, too.
In the coming year.
They have done a fantastic job in their first few months in district. So we're excited about their energy and their outlook on the direction that we can continue to move. So thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please feel free to go home and do your homework. The next item on the agenda, Ms. Brennan, is the second read of the 2627 Budget Priorities and Assumptions, which will request action this evening. I'd like to review the changes we made, please.
Yes, thank you.
So under budget priorities, if you'll go to the second page. If you go to the first bullet on the second page, second bullet, we inserted investigate in district special education programs as requested. The second bullet there, provide all staff ongoing PL. If you'll see under that, we made that language, I believe, clearer. We'll get feedback from the board. And then we hope that it satisfies the board, the insertion of what we put under the provide 21st century physical learning spaces by adding expand district-wide investment and upgrading facilities through the operating budget and long-term planning. And I'll hand things over to Mr. Brennan to review the assumptions, the changes made there.
Great. On bullet number three, we changed the verb from added to increase for full-time equivalent staff members. If you scroll down to bullet number eight, which is the one that starts with special education, tuition, and transportation, we added special education before the word tuition and transportation in that last sentence there, just to make sure that that's clear, that that's special ed, tuition, and transportation, that we are anticipating that 15% to 20% increase. And just to further emphasize that piece, we added a ninth bullet on there to discuss the five-year contract that we're currently entering. We are entered, so we entered into it this year. These assumptions will take in our second year of that contract. So we will be entering the second year of our five-year transportation contract, which will allow us to maintain stable, realized services for the students. This second year will include a 4% rate increase, which was previously specified in the coming year.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this? Any further questions?
A motion that we vote to approve the 2026, 2027 Budget Priorities and Assumptions.
Second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll be moving on to the next item, which includes the October 1st, 2025 enrollment report. Okay. So in your packet, you have the updated October 1st, 2025. October 1st is a significant date in, in school districts in the state of Connecticut because that is the date that the state officially grabs digitally our enrollment. And that officially is what the state will use moving forward in calculations. So what I'm going to do for you is actually compare these numbers that are in your packet to the actual October 1st, 2024 numbers so that you'll get an understanding of increases and decreases across the district, okay? So you will have some of these numbers in front of you and some I pulled from the October 1st, 24 enrollment report, okay? So you will see that at the elementary schools, we have currently in the system 2,463 students. You'll see that if you follow along on the right side, total elementary. This time last year, in the October 1st, 24 report, we had 2,476 students, giving us a decrease of 13 students at the elementary. I'm not going to talk about projections just yet, not to confuse you, okay? At the middle school level, you'll note on your report that we have enrolled 1,149 students. A year ago, we had 1,132 students, demonstrating this year an increase of 17 students. Today, we have 1,515 students who qualify as high schoolers. That encompasses law, foreign, the academy, and the Parsons programs. A year ago, we had 1,566 students, making it a decrease of 51 high school students. In total, this year, we have 5,127 students. Last year, we had 5,174 students, giving us a decrease of 47 students. As I conducted an analysis of enrollment from year to year, I identified a couple of big numbers that stood out to me. At JFK, we experienced a student decrease of 16 students. And that's a pretty big number when you're considering a school of 267 kids. So in one year, we saw a decrease of 16 students. At Orchard Hills, and that's an elementary school that we've been watching since COVID because of something happened on turnover of houses there. And at one point, we were, you know, headed toward 400. We actually have 14 fewer students this year at Orchard Hills than we did last year. So Orchard Hills is sitting at 336. Last year, they were sitting at 350 this time. And then there's one school that, that demonstrated a little bit of a bump up. It didn't make the two digits, but I'll mention it anyway. Matthewson has an increase of eight students this year. When we get to the middle schools, we were spot on, we are at the same exact size at East Shore Middle School, 339 last year, 339 this year. The big change came at Harborside, where we experienced a 16-student increase. And at the high school level, is where we're doing a little bit of digging, is where we saw the biggest decreases. At law, we experienced a 17-student decrease. And at foreign, we've experienced a 25-student decrease. And my first observation is that the freshman class is probably the smallest class going through that school than it's experienced in a long time. It's only at 160 students right now. The last time I conducted a review of students leaving for private school or technical schools, et cetera, it was right in the same, same ballpark as the number of the year before. So I, we are working on getting updated numbers, though. But I'm thinking it is, we do have bubbles of kids that go through the system. Sometimes they're a little bit higher, sometimes they're a little bit lower. So I'm suspecting that this is a smaller population of students going through the system. And we did experience that through the middle schools. In fact, as we were considering the reduction of FTEs, our middle school principals warned us that the outgoing eighth-grade class is smaller than the incoming sixth grade. So all indications at this time point to a smaller incoming freshman class. But in upcoming written communication to the board, I will provide you with information on students going to private, technical, and magnet schools. I usually do that annually for you, and this is usually the month that I do that for. So we, I like to also just shift the conversation a little bit to projections. We projected 5,132 students in the system and we came in at 5,027. That says to me that we're, you know, only five students off. So the formulas and statistics that we're using are working. We really predicted a much larger kindergarten class. And we were still in August saying, where are all the kindergarteners? Because we thought we were going to get this big, huge bubble over the, because of the change in legislation. And we just didn't experience that. Actually, our kindergarten and first grades, if you take a look, are pretty much the same size, 355 and 357. We were hoping for a much bigger number there. So that is the update on enrollment and my short analysis. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions or comments from the board.
Well, just piggybacking off of what you just said, I had pulled out my, my October 1st from last year as well. The kindergarten number for last year was 346. So there is a bit of a bump that I saw. And so 346 to 357 in first grade, so that's a bit of a bump.
So I guess when I, when I said that, I meant, I thought the kindergarten class was going to be much bigger than the first-grade class. Because the first-grade class was last year's kindergarten, which
Was smaller.
was smaller because of the change in legislation. So we thought, oh, we're going to get like 50 to 75 more kids and they didn't come.
Any questions on this? It's all math. Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And at this time, I'll turn things over to Mr. Brennan for the healthy food certification motion revision.
Great. So on April 14th, Ms. Faustic presented and reviewed the healthy food certification guidelines, which this board voted to implement. And then in the minutes in the motion, we approved that as well. One piece of feedback that we received from the state is that in addition to the motion that we had read, they would like us to add the language pursuant to Connecticut General Statute's section 10-215F into our motion. This is just a technicality, it doesn't affect anything with. This is just a technicality, it doesn't affect anything with our approval status. We are approved currently. This is something that we have to add in there and then submit our revision of those minutes. But everything else is the same.
So we're just restating the full motion?
Please, yes, restating the motion with that
With the correct language.
Pursuant to Connecticut general statutes.
Verbatim, Ms. Boynton.
Verbatim, Ms. Glennon. I make a motion that we vote to revise the April 14th, 2025 Board of Education Minutes 2 pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section 10-215F. The Milford Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Preett. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Brennan is going to continue with the next two agenda items, Ms. Glennon.
Yes, thank you.
So, board members, in your packet you will find a list of our quarterly budget report. This is our first quarterly budget report for this school year. And although the policy governing states that we review this quarterly report once every quarter, we review this much more. I just want to assure you that we are watching this daily, weekly if not daily. And we are constantly reviewing it to make sure that there are no issues, and if there's anything that we perceive as a possible issue, we take immediate action. I'm just, I'm going to go through this report and highlight some major areas that, just some items I would like to point out at this time. And I'd like to also just kind of put a little precursor here that there's no, no areas of concern at this time in this budget. As a quick reminder to this board that in that final column where it says percent used, many of these items are 99, 98, 100%. I just want to reassure the board once again that that's not an area of concern at this point. That percent used takes into account year-to-date spent, but also year-to-date incurred. So it's money that we've spent, but also money that we anticipate that we're going to spend. So seeing something in the high 90s or 100% does not cause alarm at this, at this time. The first account that I wanted to quickly just point out was account 1111, certified teacher salaries. And as you can see, there's no concern at this time in that account, but that is our largest account, accounting for 70% of the total budget. So it is our largest salary group, certified teaching staff. As you can see, we're right on track, but that is one of those accounts that we watch very closely. The next accounts that I wanted to point out were account 1114 and 1118, which are summer school salaries and curriculum. These two accounts, I just wanted to point out and just mention that these will increase as we go throughout the year. So not all curriculum work or summer work is done at that one point. So this is one of those accounts that will increase as we go on. Once again, no concern at those accounts. The next one that I wanted to point out was account 1130, retirement certified. As you will see, it'll say percent used, 1.47%. Once again, that is an account that as we go throughout the year, particularly in the third quarter and the fourth quarter are the ones that we will see the largest change in that percentage as people make aware, make us aware of their retirement plan. So as of right now, that is very low, and that is very normal at this time. Accounts 4,300 through 4,305, I'm going to group those together, just to kind of make mention that some of those percentages are low at this point, but those are ones that will increase throughout the year. Particularly 4,303, it says preventative maintenance, but that's also restorative maintenance, which is, which are, which is the account that we use when something goes wrong, and a boiler breaks and we need to replace that. So that's, that is a lower right now, but that's fine, because that is something that we will see as we increase throughout the year. And then the final accounts that I just wanted to point out were 5,600 and 5,601, which are our special ed tuition accounts. And as you can see, these two are over at this moment. And even though that is higher than what the total amount is right now, that is anticipated. As you are aware, we do receive funds back for excess costs at the end of the year, so that is something that we anticipate we will receive funding back for. So overall, no concerns at this time, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions on the quarterly report? All right, thank you for your diligence.
And then moving into the next report. So in your packet you will find a list of all cash dispersments for the month of September over the amount $1,500. This time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this report.
Questions from board members? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. On the first page, Thrill Share Rooms by Apogee
Yes.
Implementation and subscription, which course, class, subject?
Yeah, so that's not a particular course or subject. That's really the platform that we utilize so that teachers can communicate with families or with students. So it pushes out notifications to them. So it's a full-year subscription on that, and that's, that's really just a communication platform, so it's not a particular course in general.
Did that replace a different, did that replace Power School, or is it in addition to Power School?
I think it's in addition to Power School. It's really a communication tool that we can now more actively communicate directly with family or student, push out notifications. To my knowledge, I don't think we were utilizing that on the Power School platform.
Okay, that's great. And then another bid's question, Time Block from Omni Data, school year 2025, 2026. Same first page, $19,000.
Yes, that's Omni Data. That's like a consulting hour, so that's something that we utilize for, that's our Omni Data contract for consulting.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from board members?
All right, thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
I'll be taking the Talent Management Developmental Report from Ms. Kapasna. Attached to your board packet, board members, is a list of job postings, personal recommendations, retirements, resignations, terminations, title appointments. I'm happy to take any questions you might.
Do you know how we're doing with filling any subject areas that?
I just met a brand-new special ed teacher today
Okay.
that just got their badge, so I know that's check one.
I know that's usually something that Ms. Kapasna would service.
And I can never fulfill that job of Ms. Kapasna's, so, Ms. Glennon, if you wouldn't mind, I'll be happy to send you that update in writing later in the week.
Thank you, sure. Anybody else? Mr. Scobie?
Just kind of a silly question. What is the difference, the difference between resignation and resigned?
I think it's just the way somebody put it in.
Oh, okay. I thought there might have been like a different way they resigned or something, and I was just kind of curious why they were classified differently.
I think it's all the same.
Okay, all right.
Would you read Dr. Putaya that resigned and resignation are the same thing?
Yes, and we'll be sure of that.
I'm not, I was just confused. Fine, now that I know it's the same thing, yeah.
Is that for questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are moving on to the second read of policies, and I'm happy to turn things over to my colleagues, Mr. Brennan and Ms. Oxery.
This first policy I will be taking, have the title there. We tried to make sure that there was consistent language throughout, so anywhere that we saw the word fund, we changed it to account, as you will see reflected at the top in the subject title. Couple other edits that we made, we struck BOE, and we added Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations as the person that the board would be authorizing to make such a deposit. We also, in that second paragraph there, we condensed a lot of the repetitive language that was in that third strike-through there. So if you take a look at that, we once again struck fund and added account for that consistency of language, spelt out Board of Education where it said BOE, and then just added the sentence, each expenditure from such account shall be made only for educational purposes. And that really now captures all that language that was in that third paragraph. Down towards the bottom, we once again spelt out Board of Education rather than just have BOE, and then we added the word education before account. And once again, in that final, at the bottom of that page, we added education account. And then I think just on the last page there, similar change there, we added educational account instead of the word fund.
Thank you. I had to stop and think about this when I looked at it and remind myself that we had asked to have Board of Education spelled out everywhere so that there was no confusion with Board of Alderman.
Correct.
So.
Does that, it says BOE right in that last statement. It says balance of any leb.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, there's one more.
One more at the very last.
The Board of Education, yes, sure. We can make that change.
So we would approve this as amended. Do you have a motion?
Approval of policy, wait, no, it's like, it's one, right?
No, it's no one here, it's 3171.
Okay, so let's try that again. Approval, motion for the approval of Budget Administration Non-Lapsing Education Account, policy number 3171.1 as amended.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Yes, I got it, I got it, thank you.
And I have your second policy this evening, board members. It's policy 5125, very similar to Mr. Brennan. All of the edits after the first read are represented in blue, mostly formatting type changes. In the first paragraph, we have added Milford to the Milford Board of Education and put board in parentheses to follow formatting. Into the red, in the first definition for parent, we've changed adopt to adoptive. In the final paragraph, we have stricken officer and changed that to school official. And then since the first time that Milford Public Schools District comes up, we have added Milford Public Schools and put district in parentheses. And then going to page three, number five was one that the board had suggested some modifications to the wording. So it now reads, if the district decides on an amendment of the records as requested is not warranted, it will inform the parent slash guardian or eligible student and advise them of the right to a hearing. The district will permit the parent slash guardian or an eligible student to place a statement in the education records of the student.
Very good.
And those are the changes that were made for policy 5125.
I wonder in the, on the first page, in that first definition, if the word parent should be under adoptive. So parent means a natural parent and adoptive parent or legal guardian?
Yeah, we can make that change. Yeah, that makes sense.
Anybody else have anything? This would be as amended as well.
Yep. Motion to approve policy number 5125, student records confidentiality as amended. Is that him?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
The third policy is 6146.1, grading system. Again, this was just some formatting to clean up how it read. So in that first paragraph, we've added the Milford Board of Education and board and struck out district. Going into the second sentence, we now have it reading, the Milford Public Schools is committed to providing an instructional program that offers all students meaningful opportunities to experience success, fostering growth, confidence, and a lifelong love of learning. Striking the bottom of the sentence, we remove the Board of Education to approve the grading and reporting systems as developed by administration and faculty upon recommendation of a superintendent. And on the final page, we have used, in the first paragraph, we used the parent-student handbook. We made the edit in that second statement to correspond to that, so it also reads parent-student handbook, not parent-teacher handbook.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve policy number 6146.1, grading systems.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final policy for second read this evening is 6161.14, new policy on library display and program. Again, just some minor procedural changes. Milford Public Schools District has been replaced by Board of Education or board in the second paragraph. And in the final paragraph, we have now added the Milford Public Schools with district in parentheses.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Motion to approve policy number 6161.14, library, library display and program. Second?
Second by Ms. Preett. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And that completes the superintendent's report, Ms. Glennon.
Thank you, Dr. Putaya. Move on to consent agenda, Ms. Boynton.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 8th, 2025 business meeting, September 22nd, 2025 committee of the whole meeting, September 29th, 2025 special meeting, and October 6th, 2025 virtual special meeting.
Second?
Second by Ms. Preett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Fourth comment. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to staff administration and board members for all the work on the long-range facilities planning and to picking an architect who I think will really lead us forward into the next step of this process and look forward to getting started on that and seeing where we can dream big for Milford and what improvements and things we can make in their suggestions. So thank you to everyone, because it's been a long process, and it's great to hear everyone's opinions. So thank you.
Anybody else? All right. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Are there any objections to adjourning at 8:48? Seeing none, well, we are adjourned at 8:48. Thank you, everybody. See you in two weeks. Thank you, everybody, see you in two weeks.